Good evening and welcome to meet the candidates tonight. My name is Monica Robbitts and I'd like to welcome you on behalf of Forest Hills Council of PTAs and PTOs, your sponsor for this evening's event. I'd like to thank Anderson High School for providing the accommodations for the evening. Thank you also to the Anderson Community Television for providing the equipment that allows us to take the event. This tape will be broadcast on the Anderson Community Television Network at various times before the election. You can check the schedule for specific times once they've been determined. I would also like to thank my co-chair, Dees Stone, and the council members who helped make this night possible. Lori Kirakoff, Sherri Weber, Patty Snead, Jenny Nyack, Tamika Gilligan Mills, Kristen Haynermark, Monica McGrew, Tina Lucarella, Beth Davis, and Colleen Merling. Last but serving not least, I would like to thank our candidates, not just for their participation this evening, but for their willingness to serve the district and our community at the election. They are Mrs. Julie Viszinger, Dr. Forrest Heiss, Mr. Tommy Hamelbaum, and Mr. Richard Newman. These four candidates are running for three open positions on the Forest Hills School Board. On Tuesday, November 5th, you will have the opportunity to vote for each position for a total of three votes. Before we get started, I'd like to describe the ideas for all this evening. When you enter the auditorium, you are given a handout with each of the candidates' campaign websites, a summary of the school board's duties and the characteristics of a good school board member, and last but not least, a white question card. This card is your vehicle to ask the candidates questions that are important to you. On each card, you may designate that your question will be directed to all candidates or to a specific candidate in particular. Please limit it to one question per card. This will assist individuals from council who are reading through the questions for the moderator. Located throughout the auditorium are Forest Hills Council members who will take your question cards to reviewers and provide you with additional cards if needed. While the runners that are working in the room, please wave so you can identify yourselves. Lori and Dees and Monica is probably somewhere up in the hall. Since we've signaled these guys, and if you need assistance, may I be there? In the interest of time, after a candidate has addressed your question, please refrain from applause or any other display of emotion. Your questions are important and the goal is to cover as many as possible within the time constraints. Speaking of the time constraints, each candidate will be given the opportunity to provide opening and closing comments, and those will be timed, as well as the answers to their questions. They have predetermined time limits that candidates are aware of and we will be enforcing them. As a reminder, out of respect for our candidates, please turn yourself and bring her to silent or vibrate. At this point, I would turn the program over to our moderator, Dr. J.T. Spence, a political science professor from Thomas More College. He will serve as our moderator. He is unbiased and objective and has never met any of the four candidates prior to this evening. Please welcome Dr. Spence.
It's perhaps ironic that we're meeting tonight because this is an anniversary of one of the Lincoln-Dublin debates in 1858. Fortunately, we will not be here as long as the people were in 1858, listening to the Douglas and Lincoln debate for six hours or more at a time. Because of that, I need to bring the candidates' attention to two very important people sitting in the front row tonight. Would you please wave the yellow card? When this card goes up, we have 30 seconds left to summarize your responsible question. We now have the matador's card. The red card indicates that you have run out of time. I have often been in the seats that you are in tonight, having been a local official, and I can tell you that I understand how difficult it is to explain in a minute and a half how you feel about an extremely complex issue. But my job tonight, my goal tonight, is to tell you that when we've run out of time, we need to move on to the next candidate. Because we are trying to accomplish two things tonight, both equity and efficiency. As many questions as possible and be as fair as possible with the amount of time that each person has to answer them. With that being said, I'd like to begin tonight's forum by asking each candidate to use five minutes for their opening remarks. As I understand that typically in the Anderson Township, we go by alphabetical order and there are candidates such as myself who often find themselves at the last speaker regularly, tonight I have been asked to reverse that order. So, Mr. Marion, will you please begin tonight's forum by addressing with us what are appropriate remarks?
Certainly, but I first have a question. Are we supposed to slide two mics back and forth?
I think the microphones are sufficiently organized to pick up your voices. Is that correct? Well, we did extensive soundchecks before this.
This will probably be better. My name is Rich Newman and I am seeking a fourth term on the Forest Hills School District Board of Education. I was first elected in 1997 and have served on the board for 12 years. I chose not to run for reelection in 2011 for several reasons, but after observing the lack of vision and leadership in the school district during the past two years, along with being encouraged by many members of the community to consider running again, I felt compelled to do so. My passion for public education stems from my belief that it is the most important cornerstone of our free society. I have proven this through my years of commitment to the Forest Hills School District by asking the hard questions and by refusing to walk away from the tough conversations needed to ensure progress. Everyone is entitled to their own opinions, but everyone is not entitled to their own set of facts. And these are the facts. I am the most experienced candidate, and upon reelection, I will be the most experienced sitting board member. I have attended and participated in more than 200 Forest Hills Board meetings and workshops. I have served on every facilities committee since 1992, and I have a thorough understanding of Ohio's school finances and the challenges it presents. I am also the most qualified candidate. I'm an accomplished business owner, executive entrepreneur. I have worked across the country with elected officials, including governors, mayors, county commissioners, and city council members on multimillion-dollar public-private partnerships. I also have three years of experience as a Forest Hills Schools building administrator and nine years of experience as a high school teacher and varsity coach. I have a Bachelor of Arts degree in history, a Master's degree in sports administration and facility management, and I have earned an Ohio Department of Education Superintendent of Schools certificate. Because of this unique combination of successful careers in both the public and private sector, I bring strong progressive leadership to our school district and community. And I am mindful that more than 70% of the taxpayers in the community do not have children attending Forest Hills Schools. And I have always understood I represent all residents and not just one school or special interest group. The greatest danger for our community with respect to the school district is the illusion that everything is fine. This year, for the first time, Forest Hills did not receive the highest rating on the state report card. In May, the superintendent's board-approved facilities bond issue was soundly defeated. Our facilities remain inadequate and ill-equipped to provide our children with a 21st-century education. Within the district, school building to school building, there are significant disparities and inequities in learning environments. There is no meaningful communication about these serious issues by the school district with the community at large. Surveys are meaningless unless respondents are adequately informed. Teacher and employee morale is at an all-time low, and we are no longer one of the very top destination school districts in Cincinnati. Yet this is how we forge ahead. We stretch our dollars, provide for our children, and support our teachers. We must cut overhead and redirect those savings toward educating children through new programs and improved technology. We already have facility master plans that, if implemented, would result in both new and improved facilities while saving township taxpayers millions of dollars in operational costs each year, while at the same time increasing the depth and breadth of academic offerings and extracurricular opportunities. Much is at stake as we continue to respond to unfunded mandates such as "no child left behind," the implementation of the new common core state standards, and the Ohio Teachers' Evaluation System. The Forest Hills School District has tough decisions ahead. Solutions will involve creative thinking, collaboration, and compromise. But I have great faith in our community and our ability to come together and move past these challenges. I look forward to serving with fellow board members who share my priorities of providing children with the best education while equipping teachers with the resources needed to succeed. I also look forward to forging a new relationship with the Anderson Township trustees, working together to make our community the best it can be for students, families, and all taxpayers. I ask only that you measure the background and experience of each candidate. If you want uniquely qualified, progressive, and dynamic leadership with a vision for a better future for all residents of the Forest Hills School District, vote for me, Rich Newman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Mr. Hamelbaum.
I'd like to first start off by saying thank you to everybody for coming out here to spend some time with us. I know everybody's schedules are busy, and it means a lot that you care enough about this election. That's exactly why I'm here. Approximately a week before petitions were due, I got a phone call, and then I started to get several phone calls, that if I didn't run, there wasn't even going to be an election. So, I'm not on the board. I haven't been on the board for 12 years, but I tell you what I have done. I've been a champion for kids. I've been passionate about kids, and I've been passionate about doing what's best for kids. I've been a consensus builder. I've been a team builder. I've been able to listen and assess what needs to be done and then get it done. A little bit about my background. I grew up in a small town. My dad had the same job in the same factory for 45 years. He made me have paper routes and mill yards and work hard, and that was the only way to do it. I went to the big city of Cincinnati, met some friends, ended up coming to Forest Hills. I was a coach at Forest Hills Junior School before getting hired to be a head varsity basketball coach at Anderson High School. And I was a head coach of a varsity basketball team when I was 20, right here, because I was passionate and I just loved every second of it and I made a difference for kids. I also coached track. I coached baseball. Two years after starting here, I got hired as an assistant college basketball coach at Mount St. Joe, which then led to a college basketball coaching career. And again, working with kids, producing, working hard, long hours, trying to do what's best for kids. And then I found out that athletic director at Turpin High School was retiring, so I threw my name in the hat and ended up getting that job where I spent 16 years. Again, actually 15 years at Turpin, which again, I spent working with kids. Everything that I did during the time I was there was better when I left than it was when I got there. Our camaraderie amongst our staff, amongst our students, in our community was sky-high and through the roof. We had facilities issues that we had to tackle that required votes from the cheerleading parent rep to the wrestling parent rep to the swimming parent rep. The football parent rep actually had one vote when we decided to put turf in, and we were able to get everybody on the same page to do that and not only get that stadium up to par, but do it in a way that the whole thing was paid off in just three years. People were able to passionately get behind my passion and my vision. I was the person in the hallway that absolutely was not the athletic athletic director. I was all about the arts, all about athletics. I went on a trip with our band. I think, you know, shoot, if you ask the band directors that were there and any of the staff members, we had great relationships and I was respected. I left because I'm one of those that I don't like teachers who stay in teaching for 30 years that don't necessarily like it. If they've decided at the 15-year mark that I'm here only because, I don't know what else I would do. For me, I was there for 15 years and I was in a great spot, and I decided, you know what, it's time for me to do something else. So I went out there and I took a shot. But I am married. I have four children that will have gone 22 years through the Forest Hills School System. They have been taught by some of the best teachers, administrated by some of the best administrators, and I absolutely care passionately about this school district, care passionately about this community. I have been developing a relationship with the township. I see great things happening if I can get on this board to pair our school district with the township and help repair any situations that may have occurred there before. So, in a nutshell, everybody does have an opinion and can have an opinion, but I promise you, if you're looking for somebody up here who's been in it for kids, who is a consensus builder, who is a listener, who can take ideas, make a decision, and then make sure that that gets accomplished, then I'm confident I'm the person up here that can do it. And I can rally everybody. I can rally Anderson people, Turpin people, and the 70% that don't have kids in our schools that also are going to vote. Thanks a lot for coming here, and I look forward to the rest of the evening with you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamelbaum. Dr. Heiss.
I too want to thank everyone for showing up. This is a busy evening. I also want to thank the Forest Hills Council for the opportunity to come. I also hear an echo. A little history, I look out here, I think a lot of you know me. I've been in the township for 40-some years, except for my education and the three years I spent giving directions to my house, taking a ride at Hooters, I've been in the district. I am a proud product of Forest Hills. I went to Wilson Elementary, moved on to Forest Hills, sorry, to Turpin Middle School. I was the first class of Forest Hills Junior School back in the day. Then went on to Turpin High School. I was a National Merit Scholar there. Forest Hills provided an excellent education for me. As I moved on to Stanford University, then came back to UC Med School, did my orthopedic training down at Duke. Spent a year out in Utah for the Olympics during my sports medicine, and then again, moved off a nine-mile. Like many of you, probably everyone in this room, a major reason I moved back was the district. I had a five-year-old after three years in Claremont County, and the decision came, what to do? And here I am. We moved back in the district. I now have a child at Nagel, two at Wilson, and one of my youngest is at Anderson Hills. I've been married 15 years to a remarkable woman. Remarkable mostly because she puts up with me. I am a strong advocate for public education. My basic tenet is "children first." I've found that if we put any of the decisions of the district and we put it in the framework of putting our kids first, the kids will excel. If the kids excel, the district excels. If the district excels, the whole community excels. I ask for your vote for three reasons. First is leadership. I've been on the board now for four years, three of those in leadership positions. One is Vice President, two is President. I've also served as Chairman of the Department of Surgery at St. Elizabeth's, also served on the Board of Commonwealth Orthopedics. I am level-headed, thoughtful, and talking about consensus building, I strongly push collaboration and team building. No one of us here can get anything done. We can get a lot done. Now I have eliminated the echo. When I started on the board, we, four years ago, things were not great in the district. We were, we had a superintendent on the way out. We had big cuts in state funding. And we, the board, we, the district, we, the community responded. And things, I believe, are better than they were four years ago. I believe we are doing, we are doing a great job. I think all of us, again, we want what's best for the kids, we want what's best for our community, and we're building it. There are challenges ahead of us. There were challenges four years ago. There were challenges 20 years ago. We've come together and we've made good decisions, and I see that happening again. Commitment. I went through Forest Hills. My kids are going through Forest Hills. I have, I think, 19 family members that have been to virtually every building in Forest Hills. I have a five-year-old. I'm in this for the long haul. I look at what's good for next week, next year, but also for 10, 20 years from now. Community. We have a great community. Anderson Township and Newtown are fantastic. We've seen, now, they're challenging too, and that's what's great, I think, about our community. Back in 2006, we, we had a levy that didn't pass. Changes were made. The community rallied, and we passed one, or two, last year. In the end, all of our challenges ahead of us are going to involve all of us. The, I'm getting yellow-carded. But, and I believe we can, we can do it. My leadership skills are to involve everyone, to bring people together. I have the skills. I have the determination, and I believe that together we can do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heiss.
Yes, you can. Thank you. Sitting here, I think that I am the only person who did not grow up here, go to school here, or work in the district. So I'd like to tell you a little bit about my background. I grew up in a neighborhood outside of Erie, Pennsylvania, which is very, very much like the school district here. We had about the same number of students. The schools were a little bit differently configured, but the demographics were virtually the same. After I graduated from high school, I went to a small school in western Pennsylvania called Grove City College, knowing full well that my ultimate goal was to be a lawyer. So, I studied political science in Spanish and got degrees, and then I went to a bigger city. I went to Philadelphia and Temple University School of Law. After I graduated from Temple, I moved to Cincinnati for a job at a law firm called Dinsmore &amp; Scholl, which is where I met my husband, Mark. And Mark actually did grow up here and went to school here, graduated from Anderson right before the Anderson-Turpin split. I think he was the last class before the split. Mark and I have two children. Mark and I have been married 28 years. I have to say that because we just had our anniversary a couple weeks ago. Luke graduated in 2009 from Anderson, and he graduated recently, this past spring, from Kenyon College. Luke did very well at Kenyon, and I attribute that not only to his hard work, but the great preparation he had in going in the Forest Hills School System. Nate is a junior at Anderson. After I worked for four years at Dinsmore &amp; Scholl, I knew I didn't want to be in private practice. I knew I wanted to do public service, so I went to work for the city of Cincinnati. I was a prosecutor for about a year, and then I moved over to the Civil Division, where I eventually gravitated toward labor and employment, which is my passion. I worked at the city for 25 years, mostly in that role, and I also left for three years and came back, and I went to work at the courthouse as the HR Director for the courthouse. So, my passion obviously is human relations. My school involvement started when Luke was in first grade. I got involved at Sherwood Elementary, did pretty much multiple chairships of committees, and eventually became the Vice President and the President at Sherwood. I've also been involved at Nagel and Anderson PTA, and I eventually became involved with the Forest Hills Council of PTAs, which is sponsoring this event tonight, and the President. In 2005, Eric Okerson, who was then sitting board member, left to become a board member for the State Board of Education, and there was a vacant position. It was when I was the Forest Hills Council, it was then I was with the Forest Hills Council of PTAs, and it was a very difficult decision for me, but I was encouraged to, and I put in my application. I was chosen for the position with the understanding that I would have to run for the position that following November, which I did, and that was 2005. I ran and won. I was very blessed to be elected. And then four years later, I ran again, which was 2009. Since I've been on the board, I've been, I've served as Vice President three times, as President two times. The committees that I'm currently on are the Safety Committee and the Policy Committee and the Personnel Committee, and recently, I led the effort to have formal evaluation programs for both our treasurer and our superintendent because we hadn't had those in the past. I've also been involved outside of the Forest Hills community with other boards, including the Boys-Girls Club and the Cincinnati-Hamilton County Community Action Agency, and I've sat on a number of committees and chaired a number of committees that deal with funding children's organizations with United Way. I tell you all of this because all of these events, all of my life, has led me to right here, right now, where I am today. I'd like to tell you what I think the three most important demands for the district are right now. First of all, we have to fashion a comprehensive and economically feasible plan for maintenance and enhancement of our aging district facilities. The key is to educate our community about the need and actively encourage and involve input and support. The board has to be well researched, and the plan has to be discussed and vetted to assure that Forest Hills continues to be a destination district. I think we failed in this regard last go-around. I think we need to educate the community better, get their involvement, and as a board, discuss a plan for the future of the district. We also need to evaluate and address the new Ohio School Report Card system to be fully implemented this year. It assesses yearly growth and achievement for our students. We've been excellent or excellent with distinction for 12 years. This past year, we weren't.
Thank you, Mrs. Viszinger.
Thank you.
We are now moving to the lightning round. The candidates will have one and a half minutes to address questions. Most of these questions will come from the audience. The first question tonight is a large-scale vision for the future of Forest Hills School District. What do you see in the future when you're looking for a Forest Hills School District? What vision do you have? What challenges do you see the district facing? And we'll begin first with Mrs. Viszinger.
Okay. Thank you. I think the number-one priority right now is our facilities. I sat on the, there have been four facilities committees since I've been on the board. 2004, 2007, 2010, and 2012. The 2007 and 2012 committees basically built a new Wilson and had some security enhancements to the district and some maintenance issues. We need a broader vision. I have been, every time we got to a point where the board was discussing, there would be a facilities committee, a recommendation would come to the board, and the board would stop. That frustrated me because we never, as a board, did what I said we should do in my opening, and that is discuss a plan, vet it, look at it from all which ways. We need a facilities plan that looks to the future of Forest Hills. What frustrates me is that if you stand still as a district, everybody passes you by. And I agree with Rich that everyone is passing us by. I'm concerned that we'll no longer be a destination district. When I joined the board, we had just gotten trailers outside of Wilson. Now we have trailers not only outside of Wilson, but outside of Maddox as well. And just this past, just this past board meeting, we voted to carpet one of the trailers. It was supposed to be a short-term fix. We need to look for the next, to the next generation and what this school district is going to provide to the kids and the next generation.
Thank you, Mrs. Viszinger. Dr. Heiss, oh, excuse me. Yes, Dr. Heiss. Do you need me to repeat your question?
I wrote it down. Thank you.
Sorry.
For me, the question of visions and challenges, certainly our facilities are on the front burner at this point, and the way I look at our district, what's made our district great over the past 40 years, obviously, has not been our buildings. It's the people in the buildings. That's what's, you know, made us what we are. It is time, though, for our buildings, our facilities, to catch up with what's going on inside. I favor a collaborative effort to do that and to engage the community. We did engage the community in 2010, and over 2,000 people showed up and voiced a variety of opinions, and I anticipate that happening again, getting the community involved and seeing what our vision is for the future. The one thing about, I don't see us being passed up. We have great people in place. The one thing I'd like to say about this rating thing, if you look up the report card ratings, will be decided in 2015. There was no rating this year. So technically, we weren't, I know, I feel the same way, but there was, there was no rating, there was no rating this year. We didn't get the top rating, but that's because no ratings were given.
Thank you, Dr. Heiss. Just a little more.
Oh, yeah. I do have a clear vision. My vision is two high schools in this district. Definitely, we have to get started on a facilities plan so that, as Forrest said, the outside can catch up with the inside. We've been kicking this can down the curb way too long and talking about facilities. And again, just as Forrest said, the ideas, or I think Julie, the ideas kept coming, the committees kept coming, but it kept getting stopped at the board. And I wasn't on the board for any of those years when that started to happen, and that's a problem. I'm a fan of two high schools because of all of the opportunities that are presented for our kids in two high schools. The reality is, if we had the same evaluation system in the state this year, Forest Hills was 24 out of 24 and would have gotten an excellent with distinction again. You can go to the ODE website and look it up for yourself, okay? They've started to give letter grades in nine areas. A couple of them were below. A couple of them were below an A, no doubt about it, but they're areas that we can improve on. So two high schools, a definite Facilities Plan in place that's rolling like a locomotive, and a school Board that can garner consensus from our community and consensus from our Board. You can't pass levies when the Board is voting four to one and three to two. If the five people on the front of the room can't agree, then why would the community agree? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heiss. Mr. Newman?
Well, I have three or four -- thank you. Three or four main issues or areas of concern. Facilities have been touched upon. This is not a one-issue election. Facilities clearly need to be improved, and there needs to be a master plan put together quickly, sooner is opposed to later, that addresses all the schools in our district. When I met with the Teachers Association leadership recently, they articulated it this way: "The disparities and the inequities, building to building, are simply not fair." A student in one school may have air conditioning and more technology than you could want, which is highly unlikely in our district at this point. Another school, no air conditioning and not as much technology. That's simply not fair. I'm concerned about district leadership in this sense. We've got a lot of talented people. We've got a very young group of building administrators. They need to be mentored. They need to be mentored appropriately. Always finances, top concern, finances. Nobody's going to solve school funding in Ohio, I don't think in my lifetime, maybe not in anybody's lifetime in this room. It was declared unconstitutional 20 years ago, and legislators in Columbus still haven't figured it out. So it comes down to rugged individualism. We have to decide what we want for our schools. We need to respect and value our teachers, and we need to compensate them accordingly.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Newman. Our next question is an audience question. What unique experience or insight will you bring to the school board? Dr. Heiss, would you begin?
Well, I alluded to it in my first statement, or in my opening statement. I have a long history here, very long, if you include my wonderful father, who I followed in his footsteps here on the Board for 32 years. I'd be remiss if he -- I grew up in this situation. The -- and I'm trying to get across, too, I have a positive outlook. That's who I am. What you see is what you get. I'm positive about our district. I have a strong belief in garnering support and then acting on that. We have -- and sometimes it works out, the operating levy, the partnerships we have with PNC and Mercy, the increasing AP classes that we offer, and sometimes it doesn't, our bond issue, okay? We got a bond issue out. It failed, but we got a bond issue out that hadn't been put before the people in 40 years. So I like to think that while I bring a history in of knowing a lot of the knowledge of the district, I also am forward-looking to see what we can do best to improve. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Heiss. Mr. Heiss?
I --
Would you like me to repeat your question?
No, thank you. Ben Franklin once said, "Never confuse motion with action." Benjamin Franklin. So Marvin Lewis once said, "He sees better than he hears." And I would say, in my background, I've been able to identify issues in my current business situation, in my current work as an athletic director and as a college basketball coach, able to identify issues, and then able to motivate, organize, put together a team to get things done, whatever that goal is. Once we determine it, then let's go do it. And that takes somebody who won't go away. That takes somebody who keeps their eye on the prize. That takes somebody who even sometimes has to change the plan or deviate courses a little bit. That takes somebody who has to find people that are smarter than him to actually be on his committees and work with him, people that I can learn from, people who have greater ideas, people who may see it different ways. And I would say, for me personally, in my life, with my background, that's my strength, and that's what I would bring to this Board.
Thank you. Mr. Newman?
Unique background and experience, as I said in my opening remarks. Nine years in the classroom as a high school history, social studies, law, sociology teacher, varsity coach for 14 seasons collectively, building administrator right here at Anderson High School for three years as athletic director, 12 years on the Forest Hills School Board. Half of my professional life has been spent in the private sector. I view things a little bit differently in that regard. I've walked in the shoes of the educators. I've walked in the shoes of the private businessman. I understand how to put consensus together. I understand how to lead, and I understand how to be successful. I haven't seen much success recently with respect to the bond issue, or respect to the student achievement state report card.
Thank you. Mrs. Visser?
Thank you. I think there are three things that make me unique among us. First of all, I'm an attorney, and for, gosh, 29 years now, I've been an attorney, and I've dealt with complex issues and resolution of those issues every single day of my work life. I also had some balance as a younger attorney when I had children, which was very valuable, I think, to my connection to the school district, and that was, I worked three-quarter time for 13 years when my children were little. That was great, and gave me balance. The second thing is, I'm a PTA mom through and through. I started out at Sherwood, and I rose through all the PTAs, through the PTA, Forest Hills Council, to the school Board. So I think I know the schools inside and out. Not that my fellow male candidates don't, but I know it in a different way. And third, and this is probably the most important, I'm a public servant. And being a public servant, I worked for the city of Cincinnati, is not unlike issues involving the school district. For years and years, we were just bumped up every year in pay. Then we devised a merit-based system for the city of Cincinnati. We're looking at that now in Forest Hills Schools, so I feel like I can be very valuable to that process in changing a whole culture of automatic raises to a merit-based pay system. We also need to -- thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Visser.
You're welcome.
You may leave, Mrs. Visser. Okay, our next question. We've heard that there are several issues facing the school system. What we'd like to know is, what do you think is the primary challenge facing the Forest Hills School District, and how do you propose meeting this challenge? And Mr. Heiss, would you please go first?
It seems like the facility issue is, you know, it's just the same drumbeat going over and over here, but the thing that I would want to share with everybody, U.S. News and World report, you know, everybody jumps to there, and for whatever reason, whatever criteria they use to rank high schools, the top 30 high schools in the state of Ohio, the average school size was 1,100. So U.S. News and World report, average school size 1,100 for the top 30 in the state of Ohio, okay? In the state of Ohio, Turpin and Anderson are both ranked in the top 60, as far as how the state of Ohio are ranked in the state of Ohio, Ohio Department of Education. So I don't -- I am definitely one sitting up here that does not believe that everything's falling apart here. Our families are very supportive of education. Our two schools and all of our elementary schools are providing outstanding individual attention to our kids and opportunities. And the best part is, the leadership of this district, if you have an idea, if your son or daughter has an idea, they want to start something, they want to be a leader, the adults here say, "Go for it. Do it. How can we help you?" Over and over and over. So the issue is getting everybody on the same page, to enjoy and embrace what we have that is awesome, and then get this facilities thing going because we have to, okay? Things have to happen, but we don't need to touch it up top as far as how we're set up.
Nobody's been a stronger advocate of the Forest Hills Teachers Association, our professional and paraffed professional staff over the last 15 to 20 years, than Nate. I respect the job that our educators do. We have a wonderful parent community. Those are the main reasons why we succeed, in spite of some of the difficulties and disadvantages that we're faced with facility-wise. Facilities have to be improved. We have to move forward. We have to move forward quickly. Anybody who doesn't acknowledge that is whistling past the graveyard. Beyond that, the unique challenge of implementing the Common Core and the Ohio Teachers Evaluation System with the limited resources that we have, the limited time that we have, those are very important challenges that we need to support our staff with every resource we possibly can summon up.
Thank you. Mrs. Visser?
I think there are two primary challenges. The third issue that I was going to raise in my opening, that I ran out of time for, was that we need to control our costs, obviously. 82% of what we spend our money on is people, is our staff. Our staff is also the heart and soul of what we do and what we have in this school district. So we need to continue to work in a positive way with our three unions to control costs, but also to keep and attract top-notch employees. Forest Hills Schools is what our teachers are and our staff. I won't say to you that I think our staff is overpaid. What I will say to you is, I think the system that we have for paying them is antiquated. We do need a merit-based pay system, and we're working on that, and it's imminent. Again, the second challenge, and I know we've all brought this up over and over again, but we were asked what the primary challenge is, again, is facilities. The process needs to go in a much more methodical, strong way than it has in the past. The Ohio Facilities Construction Commission was just in our district. It's an independent group that will give us two binders full of great information by the end of this year. After we receive that information, we should conduct a community survey, but when we conduct that community survey, we need to educate people from that report as to what the needs of the district are. If there's one thing we've failed in, it's educating the community about the need.
Thank you, Mrs. Visser. Dr. Heiss?
The -- I see the primary challenge is a challenge that we face year in and year out, and that is keeping the community involved. The -- our facilities are, obviously, we've brought it up, I think, every question. It's -- we're in a unique place now, in that one of the problems with facilities, and one of the reasons, I think, over the past 30 years, it's been kicked on down the road, is because every time you finish with your Facilities Committee, you come up with recommendations, you run into an operating levy. That's the way our system works. It's wrong. It shouldn't be that way, but it is that way. So we have a unique situation here, where we can actually do something about it without having to worry in the next year or two of having to go out for operating money. The mandates are something that it is an all-ever-present problem. Peter Stoutberg brought up the fact that he feels he's one of the biggest problems or impediments of our district, even though he supports it. It's the people in Columbus and the things that they do that we have to, again, gather ourselves, fight against, or incorporate into our system as we see fit. Thank you.
Well, I think there is a critical issue here that the public wants to hear, everyone speak to, and this is the idea of either consolidating or not consolidating the two high schools. So we'll make that the fourth question. Specifically, what's your view on whether or not to consolidate the high schools? And we'll begin this question with Mr. Newman.
My position has been well noted over the years. In 2010, the Facilities Committee that I co-chaired with now-retired Superintendent Dr. John Patzwal brought to the school Board and the new Superintendent, two options to consider, to place on the ballot, that were the result of literally hundreds upon hundreds of people hours analyzing and evaluating the issue from every conceivable angle. The two options, one with two high schools, one with one high school, resulted in savings over the 40-year life of the bond to create those new and improved facilities. The two-high-school model, you had cost savings of $7 million over 40 years in operational expenses. The one-high-school model, $171 million in cost savings over the 40-year life of the bond. Rick Tepfer, our district Treasurer, Ray Johnson, our district Business Manager, Superintendent Patzwal, educators, construction companies, architects, all have their fingerprints on this. This community will never build two new high schools. Enrollment's declining. It will decline according to the district's own projections by 18% over the next 10 years. And it's a red herring and a myth that there will be less opportunities. In fact, it's the opposite. There'll be greater depth and breadth of academic offerings, and greater depth and breadth in extracurricular offerings.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Mrs. Visser?
I was, when I was last Board President, it was around, it was during the last Facilities Committee prior to this one, 2010. I learned so much by sitting on that committee. The committee started out as a Superintendent's Committee, and the makeup of the committee was, I think there were 12 of us, and the Superintendent who's here tonight, the then Superintendent, Dr. Patzwal, was very careful to choose people that had been leaders in the community, represented both Turpin and Anderson, and some business folks as well that didn't have kids in the district. The committee eventually became, through litigation, a Board Committee. As soon as we opened the doors to that committee, the whole tone of the conversation changed. People that you thought were either one high school or two high schools before it opened, the committee opened, we had great discussion. We had people in from large high schools, we had people in from -- that had done grade banding. We learned so much, but the problem was, none of that good information was ever discussed at the Board level. My problem has always been that this Board has never had the discussion, and I have never had the discussion with the Board, so I have never come down either for one high school or two high schools, because we've never discussed it as a Board.
Thank you, Mrs. Visser. Dr. Heiss?
For me, I'm about opportunity. The -- I believe one of the strengths of our district is the opportunity that we provide our kids. I am open to seeing all sides of the issue, of having the discussion. I don't see on the face how one high school gives more opportunity. I've heard it, I've never seen it. The one other point, this declining enrollment that's been brought up, in 2010, when the Committee, the Facilities Committee, did their study, are projections at that time where we were going to have 500 more kids. Personally, I think all the enrollment facts are fiction. In 10 years, we've only, we've gone up or down about 5%. So that's how I look at it. We're not going to drop 1,000 students, no more than we're going to gain 1,000 students. So I look forward to the discussion. A lot of the savings that were in those numbers were in staff positions that could be consolidated, that have been consolidated. So it'll be interesting to see, as we move forward, and we are going to move forward, what the numbers are, what the opportunities are, and what the community will support.
Thank you, Dr. Heiss.
I've, yeah, I think I've answered that one a couple of times, but Safe Schools Facility Planner Source online, if anybody goes home and does a Google search on optimal high school sizes, or optimal school sizes, or ideal school sizes, what you're going to find is that, you know, for economic efficiency, high school-wise, it's 8,000 to 1,200. When you look at news, you know, the News and World Report rankings, like I told you, the top 30 Ohio schools, it's 1,100. Things that get lost when you get bigger than that are that you, more students get lost when you have 20 lost when you have twenty-five hundred, three thousand kids, you know? Why, why don't you hear about Oak Hills, and why don't you hear about Fairfield, and why don't you hear about all of those schools, you know, just hitting grand slams out there that are that big? When you get them that big, they spend all their time trying to make them smaller. My whole point is, we have two great schools in a great community with two great teaching staffs. We have a band at each place, we have a slew of plays and lead actors, we have sports teams that have varsity players on both sides, and JVs, and freshmen, and tons of experiences that they just wouldn't get to have. You know, what, what schools do you hear about in Cincinnati? You hear about Wyoming, you hear about Indian Hill, you hear about Madeira, you hear about Marymont. They're all smaller than we are already. Why would we willfully?
Thank you, Mr. Newman.
You're welcome.
Okay. This is an interesting question in regards to the bond issue. With the failure of the bond issue, how do you see the facilities issue unfolding in the future? In other words, how does the Forest Hills School District meet its facilities challenge? And we'll begin with Mrs. Visser. One point to the timeline, please. Could you move the yellow and red card a little bit? The candidates are trying to address the audience, too, and they sometimes can't see it unless it moves. Thank you. Mrs. Visser?
Could you restate the question? I'm sorry.
Certainly. With the failure of the recent bond issue, how do you see the facilities issue unfolding in the future? In other words, how does the Forest Hills School District meet its facilities challenge?
Um, in January of this year, the school board voted on the bond issue that went before the public in May. I was the sole no vote, and it was sort of a lonely place to be, but I have to tell you that I, I respect my fellow board members for the position they took, and after the vote was taken, I did nothing to thwart the effort of the bond issue. I thought the bond issue was, fell short because it dealt with mostly maintenance issues, some safety and security, a new Wilson, which everybody thinks we should have, and I agree with that, and air conditioning for the three very old un-air-conditioned buildings. We need to look at the school district as a whole. As I said before, we had the, I think I was the one who raised it, that we needed to have the Ohio School Facilities Commission, which is now the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, come back in. They had been here in, I believe, 2004, I always get that date wrong, but they had been here before and looked at our facilities. We needed to get them back in to give us an independent look at our facilities. And again, we can use that data that's independent to move forward. We need to educate the community about what that report says. We need to go out and, and do surveys, and we need to form a new facilities committee and move forward. But we need to look at the whole district, not one versus two high schools. We need to look at what is best for the district as a whole.
Thank you, Mrs. Visser. Dr. Heiss?
As far as timeline, I see the, the OFCC is, is going to bring a report back. I think a lot of us know what's going to be on that in general. It'll be interesting in the details and their knowledge about how to, sorry, and their knowledge on how to, to improve on, on, in the individual buildings. I see surveys as being an important part. I think more than us educating you, I think there will also be education toward the board, is to see what the community wants now. We had surveys back in 2010. That, there, the ideas back then may have changed, the, as, as our community has changed and our facilities have changed. So, I see us needing to educate, or to get the education out on what our needs are, and then also receive education on what the community wants. I, I see more community involvement in either in the paper, getting plans out. I think the, the, the bond issue that we had was, was fairly nebulous in, in what it was going to, to, to do. The, I think a new program needs to get pictures out, get straight ideas, get ideas out, show us what we're getting for what we're asking for.
Thank you, Dr. Heiss. Mr. Himmelforn?
First thing is, as Julie referred to, the current study that is taking place right now, I think that information is hugely important. Secondly, we need to communicate those results, get input from the community, get input from all of our educators. Then we got to make a decision, and then we got to get things done. Each step of the way, though, we have to ask the question, what's best for our kids? What's best for our kids? What's best for our kids? And that's what we have to keep hammering out. You know, dollars and cents might speak to the seventy percent that don't have kids in the system, and it definitely makes a difference, but we're doing it all wrong if that's the only determining factor that we're going to use. And now, I'm really going to surprise you when I say, if after the current study comes back, and we have community input, and after we have educator input, if it's clear that that path leads to one high school, as a board member, I'm not going to be the person to submarine that. I'm going to get on board, and I'm going to make sure that we get it taken care of. So, you know how I feel, I've stated that, but I think that's what the process needs to be.
Thank you. Mr. Newman?
You're elected to the school board to lead. Certainly, you have to inform the community, but as a board member, you are privy to more information that could possibly be disseminated to the community at large. We need to do a better job of that. I think it's disingenuous at best to say that, well, our, our demographic and enrollment reports don't mean anything because this came out this year, and it's got the district's logo, title, and shows an eighteen percent enrollment decline over the next eighteen, over the next ten years, so it ought to be changed if it's not accurate. Nine years ago, the same group that's in here now, looking at our facilities, did the same exact thing that they're doing now. And when we got the grades back, the ratings, we put it up against the Forest Hills School District grading scale. I don't know how much red you can see from that far out, but eight of the nine buildings had a preponderance of D's and F's. If you care about students, if you care about our children, we need new facilities. Period. End of story. Why did the bond issue fail in May? It was ill-conceived, it was good money after bad, and I wasn't on the board for the last two years, so no one can hold that against me. Moving forward, we need to act quickly because there's going to be an operating levy no later than November sixteen, and if we don't go out for a facilities bond issue before then, you're looking at another six to eight years before you're going to have the opportunity to do so. You'll lose another generation of Forest Hills students to inadequate facilities.
This course is number six. Dr. Heiss will begin. What is your operational definition of success in success for all students? What is your operational definition of success when someone says to you, what is success for all students?
I believe our, success for all students, for me, means that the gifted student has the support and the ability to learn at the level that he or she is. It also means that the special-needs student has the ability and support to maximize their potential. It means that the, the art student has the ability to maximize their potential and to realize their dream. It's for the art student, when they find out that music is better for them, or they like that more, that they have the opportunity to do that. I've been incredibly impressed with our teaching staff, and as a parent, to be able to take the number-one student and challenge him or her, and take the thirtieth student, or the twenty-fifth student, hopefully, in the class, and prod and, and improve that, that student, too. So, for me, it's to have the, we get the facilities, the facilities to allow it, the opportunity, and the staff to, to promote that for all students.
Thank you, Dr. Heiss. Mr. Himmelforn?
To me, success for all students is all about the relationships and, and the experience and what they're able to do once they leave Forest Hills. You know, every year at graduation, it's awesome to see the smiles on their faces, see them walking down that aisle, heading out, and, and then it's the now what? Well, I think that Forest Hills students have been prepared when they go away. We hear the stories over and over and over how great a job that we did educating these kids, and, and teachers all the time, who were known as the, the hard teachers, and are getting letters from students and thanking them because of how easy their freshman year is compared to others. So, as Forrest said, I think we need to meet each individual kid at their level, and we need to help them excel and succeed to their level, and help them be in a good place when they leave us to do great things. Having said that, one of my main things in my background has been to try to hire the right adults to work with kids, and I've said it over and over, the greatest influence I could have on kids is through the right adults, and that would be making sure that we're hiring the right teachers, not just the first-year teachers, but we're hiring good teachers, and, and the ones who can challenge our kids and get the most out of them.
Thank you, Mr. Himmelforn. Mr. Newman?
Well, I concur with Dr. Heiss and Mr. Himmelforn in a lot of respects, many respects, of what they said about what success for all students means. Everybody remembers their favorite teacher and what impact they had on their lives, and we have an abundance of great teachers who do have that type of impact on our students. But it's 2013, and success for all students means important skills have to be learned, critical thinking, problem-solving, collaboration, creativity. In a global economy, we need a skilled workforce, and there is a direct line between student achievement and the facilities. Our staff and our students have one arm tied behind their back in many cases because our facilities do not accommodate the level of learning that we need to have to move forward in this community.
Thank you. Mrs. Visser?
Well, obviously, a public school has a variety of students, just like the community at large. We have our special-needs students, we have our regular middle students, and our gifted students. We have to support each one of those groups, but we can't support one at the expense of the other. Our special-needs program is so good that we have about nine percent special-needs students in the district. People move here for our special-needs services, and that's Betsy Ryan and her staff that are amazing people, probably among the most amazing gifted educators I've met. We've done some great things to enhance our success. We have twenty-two AP courses now, we have three college readiness courses, which are financial literacy, engineering, and teaching, to prepare our kids for the next step in their lives. We need to support our staff in providing everything they need to succeed. And the one thing that does concern me is with the Common Core standards, forty-eight states have adopted the Common Core standards. I think there's a fear that we're going to become cookie-cutter. We can't be cookie-cutter. We need to remember to, we, we need to be able to still differentiate among the gifts that each of our kids bring to the classroom and be able to address them.
Thank you, Mrs. Visser. Our seventh question will be addressed to the Common Core standards. Please speak to how you feel the Forest Hills School District will be impacted by the Common Core standards. Mr. Himmelforn?
Well, I think if you've been around education enough, there are new programs that come around every once in a while, and fundamentally, I would say I am opposed to the federal government getting involved in high school and, and middle school and elementary education at the, at the community level. I think the communities ought to decide what's best for their community. Having said that, the Common Core has been adopted by Ohio. Teacher evaluations are based on components of the Common Core. Our students, when they get tested in these new tests that are being developed by the state, they're all being tested based off of Common Core. There are dollars attached to the fact that we implement the Common Core, so I think it's a part of our life. I want to applaud Forest Hills for actually implementing it in the last year, this year, before it was mandated, so that we could actually be ahead of the curve and, you know, get after it and see where the kinks are and fix them. And absolutely, we have teachers who, you know, my daughter had a teacher who said, "Look, just because it doesn't fit the Common Core, if your daughter's having some trouble, we're going to do what we need to do to make sure that she gets what she needs." And that's what I appreciate about the teaching staff here at Forest Hills.
Thank you. Mr. Newman?
Not to put too fine a point on it, but the federal government had nothing to do with creating Common Core standards. It was actually developed by teachers and researchers at the behest of a bipartisan group of governors and state education leaders. And Common Core standards are explicitly linked with what colleges and employers want young people to know. It's more rigorous. If rigorous is a bad word now, we're in bad shape, which is scarier, international competition for skilled workers, or the loss of some local authority. My concern, and I've spoken to both our Director of Curriculum and the leadership of the Forest Hills Teachers Association, they aren't troubled by the Common Core in an academic sense, but I share their concern that they don't have enough time, and haven't had enough time, to study and discuss the new standards with one another, to brainstorm how they could reinvent their lessons for these high expectations, and in districts with strong leadership, they should have that opportunity. I trust the Forest Hills School District educators to make the best of this, and they'll use their knowledge and their skills and their experience and judgment as an essential part of the implementation, implementation process, but it's not going to be easy.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Mrs. Visser?
I agree with Rich. This isn't a federal government mandate. Was there pressure from the federal government? Sure, there's always pressure from the federal government. You're going to lose some money if you don't implement the Common Core standards. That's, that's the, that's the hammer. But it is a consortium of states and educators, and we are one of forty-eight states that has adopted it. It is what it is. Doesn't mean we have to love everything about it. I, by nature, am someone that embraces federalism. I think that the government is better run at a state and local level than it is at a federal level. With that said, I know our staff is working very hard to implement Common Core. They're very far along in the math program, and they, they will follow with the language arts program. Some of the dangers of the Common Core are one-size-fits-all, and we know kids don't learn at a one-size-fits-all rate. Also, the cost of changing materials and the cost of training our educators to implement it are negatives. I do like, I do like the idea of rigor, though. I have to say, I agree with Rich on that. Our country has failed for years in the global community in education. I do like, I do like the rigor. I don't like the cookie-cutter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Visser. Dr. Heiss?
I think the question was the implementation, and it doesn't have a huge impact on our, on our district. Like any mandate that comes down, there's very rarely a large check associated, associated with it. There's rules, there's changes, and our, our teachers, to Rich's comment, are, are working extremely hard. To Tony's comment, that we have started it a year early, which allows us, we hope, to understand, to try and incorporate into the, into the lessons. It's not a federal program. The, the theory behind it is sound. We want more rigor, we want to compete in the international marketplace, but like many things involving the government, it starts getting political after that. But it is here. It's, it's important for us to, and that's where we get the educators involved, is, is when people ask me about it, I say, "Well, I talked to the teachers, what they think about it." And not all like it, but they're embracing it and, and making the best for our kids, and that's, and that's all I can ask. So, it does have a huge impact. I don't like, I don't like unfunded mandates in general, so, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heiss. We have time for one last question before closing remarks. Communication is important. I think all of you will agree with this. How do you think the school board should address keeping strong lines of communication open between the board and the larger community? And we'll begin with Mr. Newman. And we have Mr. Newman.
The Forest Hills School District, by and large, again, a criticism, has not done a good job communicating with the public at large. A long time ago, we didn't even have any type of public relations administrator on our staff. I pushed and pushed and pushed to get one, we finally had a part timer sitting in a closet over in the White Building. Now we've got a full-time PR person, but I don't believe that person, whether she's the right person, the wrong person, is irrelevant, is given the resources. We don't have enough education of our faculty and our staff and our administrators to communicate the way, one school district I know that was brought up in kind of the pejorative sense earlier, Oak Hills, they always communicate on an ongoing basis and make sure that the community at large is informed. There are ways to do that, to reach out to the private schools, to reach out to the parochial schools on an ongoing basis, not just when you need money. I have taken great lengths, gone to great lengths, and taken great pains over the last couple months to speak to all those constituent groups. They listen, they watch, they observe, they get the link between schools and their property values, but they want to see a smart plan, and they want to see progress.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Mrs. Fisher?
When we hired, um, Dallas Jackson, the three mandates that we hired him for were to do a long-range plan, to enhance our relationship with the community, and to help us with facilities. Um, Dallas, in my opinion, has excelled in, um, enhancing relationships with the community. Um, he works on a regular basis now with the Anderson Township Trustees, which, for years, I don't get it still, there was bad blood between the trustees and the Board of Education. I'm also encouraged by the people that are now running as trustees, that they will continue to work with, with the next Board of Education. Um, Dallas has also, uh, joined a number of state and local organizations, business organizations, and education organizations, and he sends monthly newsletters and, uh, to the community at large. Our website has been enhanced. Our website, um, is very good, and it's very accessible. Uh, we also have a district safety committee, which meets three times a year, and involves, uh, people from the community, um, safety forces, and the parochial schools as well. I agree with Rich, we have not done a good job. I am, I am, I am convinced that anything we have lost in this district as far as facilities or bond issues is because we do not communicate well. Um, I don't have a magic wand, I don't have a crystal ball, I, we need to do better, we are starting to do better, and, uh, I, I think Dallas will continue to do that, and I think the new board will as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Dr. Heisman?
This is truly a challenge. Uh, the, having talked with people on both the operating, the last two operating levies, and also the bond issue, as we get more connected, and there's more ways to disseminate information, it turns out, it's more difficult in some ways to do that. I had a discussion with one person, who said, "Well, I didn't even know there was an election today," and she was a poll worker. I said, "Well, did you, did you look at the Forest Hills Journal?" "No, I don't read the paper." "But we sent out emails, I don't read my emails." "How about a, a letter in the, in the, in the mail?" "Oh, that's junk mail, I throw that out." "We made a phone call." "Well, I don't answer the phone if I don't recognize who it is." Okay? I mean, there, so, so some of it, I, there has to be back and forth, there has to be a willingness to want to know more. Now, I will take a, will take a, a page from the township book, and that their Insight Magazine, I think, is wonderful. It's short, it gets the point across, it's not every week, and that's something that the district is looking at, as something that people can look for once a month, or once quarterly, and get an idea. Also gives them ways to connect with, on websites and other things if you do want more information. So, it's certainly something the district's working on, and I, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. Heisman. Mr. Himmelfarb?
Yeah, I, I'd like to echo, uh, a whole lot of what Julie and Forrest said, and I'm not going to repeat it all, but I know a lot of times, sitting in our office, when we had people coming in, uh, we could stand in front of the room and go over the rules, and go over the expectations, and go over all the good that's happening in front of, uh, an auditorium this size that was full, and until it actually affected somebody, or hit them right in the face, um, they didn't really actually pay attention to it. So, I think you have a lot of that. I do know that, uh, we have doors that are open, um, our administrators answer questions, they'll talk to anybody who wants to talk to them. I think sending out a, a magazine similar to the Insight once a month, uh, is awesome. The other thing that really helps, social media wise, is, you know, all of us have these different things that we subscribe to. If you know that at 10 o'clock on the first Tuesday of every month, something's going to hit, that you're interested in, you'll actually look for it. So, I think we have to just constantly keep doing that stuff, and understand that it's a, a never-ending, a never-ending search for how to communicate in the best way possible. And to Rich's point, you can't just communicate when you need something, you know? You got to get out there and, uh, communicate all year round, all the time.
Thank you very much. We will now move to the closing remarks. Each candidate is given two and one-half minutes to make closing remarks. Ironically enough, we have, we have achieved back to the alpha to begin the closing remarks, so Mrs. Fisher, will you begin?
Okay, I'm a B. Um, I'd like to thank the Forest Hills Council, PTAs, Monica Rothis, and her committee for, uh, sponsoring this tonight, Professor Spence for his very first, um, moderator event, and, um, you for your commitment to Forest Hills and our children. Um, in reflecting during this election period, I keep recalling a question asked by me in 2000, asked of me in 2005, when I interviewed for the open board position, and I believe the question came from Rich, and went something like, "What would you do if faced with a decision where your opinion was different than the majority of the board, or some members of the community at the time?" I paused, and I responded that I believe my job would be to study an issue, discuss it, reflect on it, and then do what I believe was in the best interest of the school district, because as Rich pointed out, school board has more information available than, than anyone on school issues. I carried that question and my answer with me throughout my nine years on the board, and I'll give you two examples. Uh, the first year I was on the board, um, we, uh, considered the, uh, co-curricular, the extracurricular, co-curricular, I'm sorry, extracurricular code of conduct, and that governs, um, athletes and extracurricular participants' behavior. I voted against that issue. Again, it was a four to one vote, because I believed it intruded into the private lives too much of our families, and that to treat a seventh grader and a 12th grader the same as far as consequences was the wrong thing to do. Fast forward to 2013, I told you earlier that I also was the sole negative vote on the facilities issue, and I was the sole negative vote because largely, I thought the facilities issue air-conditioned three old buildings, um, and, and dealt with routine maintenance items. It was not a comprehensive enough plan for the long-term future of the district. Both, both votes were lonely places to be, but I stayed true to the promise I made about nine years ago. I remain committed to that promise. As a volunteer mother for 16 years and being on the board, I have intimate knowledge of the, the district inside and out. As a lawyer, I have the ability to take, analyze, and solve complex issues, it's what I do every day. Forrest's dad has said to me over and over again over the years, "Nobody knows who you are, who we are in the school dis, in the school board, or what we do." I hope that you have been, I hope that Forrest is wrong, and you've been watching me, and you've been judging me and evaluating my service, and I appreciate your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Dr. Heisman?
I too want to thank the Forest Hills Council, I especially want to thank everyone here, our moderator. Also like to thank Stanley, who's been in the, in the backyard videotaping this for ever, the whole community to watch at 2:00 in the morning. The, uh, I brought it up earlier, for me, I, what you see is what you get. I'm straightforward. I think through processes, I'm not an attorney, I'm the son of an attorney, I don't know if that's good or bad. I am a surgeon, I make decisions every day, thoughtful decisions, what's best for people's medical livelihood. Here, I think that's, in some ways, it's more important. In my day-to-day life, I take care of, uh, people one at a time. Here, uh, we affect generations, we affect the whole community. So I ask for your vote more as a, uh, as a shared commitment toward our kids. I too will voice my opinion, I've been in the, the 4-1 votes before. I've been at 3-2 votes, I prefer 5-0 votes. I think that I can be one who can bring everyone together, get a plan, get it done, be it Common Core, be it facilities, or whatever else comes down the pipe. So, thank you for coming, and I appreciate your vote.
Thank you, Dr. Heisman. Mr. Himmelfarb?
Um, my kids would die right now if they would see this part, but I'm going to recite a poem. "And I saw a group of men tearing a building down, a group of men from my hometown, with a heave and a ho and a mighty yell, they swung a beam and the sidewall fell. I said to the foreman, 'Are these men skilled, the type you'd hire if you wanted to build?' He laughed and said, 'Why, no, indeed.' He said, 'Common labor's all I need, because I can tear down in a day or two what it took a builder 10 years to do.'" And I thought to myself, as I walked away, "Which of these roles am I going to play?" And so I'm here to tell you that we definitely have issues that need to be worked on, and we definitely have a whole lot of good stuff going on in Forest Hills. I mean, there are some people that have worked hard for our kids, and when you're ranked in the top 10% of the state in, in different areas, that doesn't mean that everything's falling apart and we're turning a blind eye to what's going on out here. It means we've got a lot of good going on that we need to build on, and we do need to do something facilities-wise. We cannot stand pat in the facility area. We do need to do something to take care of our teachers and get past this impasse that we are, because they have such a great impact and influence on our kids on a day-to-day basis, and they work so hard, and we don't want them to go to other school districts because we want them to stay here. So, with that, I would just like to say, I've got a history of working with people, um, I don't have too many landmines in my back. Uh, what you see is what you get. I'm a listener, I'm a doer, and, uh, I would be honored at the opportunity to serve you and your kids in this community, in this capacity, and I would really appreciate your vote on November 5th.
Thank you. Mr. Newman?
I echo the thanks to the PTA Council, Monica and Dee, Dr. Spence, everyone for being here tonight. I'd also be remiss if I didn't thank my family, who's here this evening, at least in part. My lovely wife Sue, retired now after 30 years, is a special ed teacher in the Sycamore Community Schools. Our four children graduated from Anderson High School. Our daughter Stacy Bailey is in her 18th year of teaching and coaching here. We're very proud of all of them, they got great educations. Leadership takes vision. Knowing that today's decisions will affect the community decades from now, real leaders are willing to do what is arduous, uncomfortable, and sometimes personally difficult, for the sake of what's best for everyone. I've always strived to listen carefully, consider ideas thoroughly, and make decisions wisely. Pulitzer Prize winner Pauline Gracies wrote in his book, "The Rise and Fall of the American Automobile Industry," quote, "Problems denied and solutions delayed will result in a costly day of reckoning. That sounds blindingly obvious, but it's amazing how frequently it's ignored," close quote. Charles Darwin said, "It is not the strongest of the species that survive, nor the most intelligent, but the one most responsive to change." The Japanese word, kaizen, refers to a philosophy of continuous improvement. It requires the art of the long view, the wisdom of forward thinking, and the ability and courage to take something apart and put it back together in a better way. And there is simply no such thing as maintaining the status quo. You're either moving forward or falling behind. We all know the right things to do, the hard part is doing them. I repeat again, if you want a uniquely qualified, progressive and dynamic leader with a vision for a better future for the Forest Hills School District and the community, vote for me, Rich Newman. Thank you.
Thank you to all the candidates, and I'd like to say that, uh, you, thank you for participating in the elemental, the essential aspect of democracy. Candidates who have placed themselves in front of you to answer the questions, the issues that you think are important in the school district. I want to say that there are many more questions we could ask tonight, but it's almost 8:30, and we want to get you time to go home and get a good night's sleep too. So, I hope that you will continue to follow the progressives candidates as they work towards the election in November, and on that day, please wish me a very happy birthday. So, we'll be joined again, congratulating the candidates.
Um, for our ladies, we'd like to thank our members participating this evening, as well as Dr. Spence for his moderating expertise. For more information on any of the candidates, please visit their individual websites. All have graciously provided a link that you can use to reach out to them directly. The websites are provided on a handout in the lobby, or you may have been given one when you walked in. Once again, Community Television Network will broadcast this, and the schedule will be available on their website, which is also provided on the handouts. If you know anyone who is interested in attending but unable, please encourage them to tune into the broadcast. Thank you so much for your attendance. If your specific question did not get asked, please feel free to contact the candidates, use their website directly, and don't forget to vote on November 5th. Thank you.[1783.15][1783.15][applause]